Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Harshen?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Blatt?
Blatt's here, too. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which, if you would remain standing for an invocation, which will be offered by, I think it's Elder Todd Johnson, right? Not Pastor Todd Johnson?
Pastor.
From representing Blazing Grace Ministries. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think he told me elder, but if that's not the case, then so be it. If you'd come up here, Todd, please. Thank you.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for your many blessings, those seen and those unseen. Lord, bless the city of Pocatello. Bless the citizens who are in need and those who are willing to lend a hand to others. Bless our leaders and their decision-making. Grant them wisdom and discernment. Also, Lord, bless the leaders of our county, states, and national governments. Please keep us in your will and your favor. God bless the United States of America. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We don't have it, never mind. Never mind. Thank you, Todd. With that, we'll move to agenda item number three is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Material claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the period of April 16 through 30, 2023. B. Treasurer's report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report from March 2023 showing cash and investments as of March 31, 2023. C. Animal Shelter Advisory Board reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Rona Martinez to continue serving as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Rona's term will begin May 20, 2023, and will expire May 20, 2025. D. Civil Service Commission appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Randy Norton to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission, filling a vacancy. Randy's term will begin May 5, 2023, and will expire May 5, 2029. C. Housing and Alliance and Community Partnership appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Steve Ernst to serve as a member of the Housing and Alliance Community Partnership Board, replacing Karina Rorres, who resigned. Steve's term will begin April 21, 2023, and will expire April 21, 2028. F. Council decision Zone Map Amendment Approval Western Skies. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a request from Land to Quest Incorporated to amend the zoning designation of approximately 3.58 acres of land located east of Dulston Drive and west adjacent to I-86 Southern Merger Ramp and I-15 from zoning designation residential medium-density multifamily RMM to residential high-density RH. G. Council decision Brock Place Townhomes Planned Unit Development Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a request by Morris Construction LLC for a planned unit development consisting of approximately 4.69 acres of land located south of Filbin Road and west of Brock Drive. Subject to conditions, the development shall consist of 36 residential townhomes, townhome lots, eight fourplex lots, and combination stormwater, open space, and recreation areas. Can't even see out of my own glasses. H. Council decision Rim Rock Properties Subdivision Short Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short platte from Rim Rock Properties Subdivision, which subdivides approximately 2.79 acres of land located at 4539 South Fifth Avenue into two commercial lots subject to conditions. I. Council decision Parley's Way Short Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short platte for Parley's Way, which subdivides approximately 1.32 acres of land located at 2207 South Grand Avenue into two residential lots subject to conditions. J. Council decision Snell Swisher Split Short Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short platte for Snell Swisher Split, which subdivides approximately 0.57 acres of land located at 1154 Swisher Road into one two-unit duplex lot and one single-family lot, subject to conditions. K. Council decision Fairgrounds Place Short Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short platte for Fairgrounds Place, which subdivides approximately 33.81 acres of land located south of Venture Way and east of Fairgrounds Road into three lots, subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor, I think that should be west of Fairgrounds Road.
It should be west of Fairgrounds Road. East of Fairgrounds Road is the Wellness Center.
Yeah. And the Fairgrounds.
So we need to make sure that that's done right, because they're going to start building where the amphitheater is, if not. L. Council decision Bonneville Commons Condominiums Number One Short Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the short platte for Bonneville Commons Condominiums Number One, which subdivides approximately 0.12 acres of land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of North Eighth Avenue and East Lander Street into three lots, subject to conditions. M. Council decision Bonneville Commons Condominiums Number Two Short Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the short platte for Bonneville Commons Condominiums Number Two, which subdivides 0.12 acres of land located at the northeast corner of intersection of Ninth Avenue and East Lander Street into three lots, subject to conditions. And... That's a long consent agenda. Yes, Council President Cheetum?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the consent agenda, agenda item number three as presented, items A through M, with the modification made to item K, making that east, west of Fairgrounds Road instead of east.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion by Cheetum and a second by Lurick with the one modification. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Harshen?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. We have agenda item four is proclamations. We have three proclamations. One proclamation Drinking Water Week will be read by Councilmember Mansfield. Municipal Clerks Week will be read by Councilwoman Lurick, and Older Americans Awareness Month will be read by our Council President Rick Cheetum. Councilmember Mansfield?
Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life of our citizens enjoy, and whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of the pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps, and whereas the coronavirus pandemic has shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend, and whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our water, our source waters, from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it, now therefore, I, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of City Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through May 13, 2023, as Drinking Water Week in Pocatello, and further encourage all citizens to recognize the value of water in our community and seek opportunities for education regarding and involvement in local water issues.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Levi Lusk. I'm a utility data technician for the Water Department, and I also serve as the Water Education Coordinator for the department. And I just want to say that I am honored and privileged to accept this proclamation from you guys. It means a lot. Your continued support means a lot to us in our efforts to continue to educate the public on this important resource. In celebration of Water Week, of National Water Week, we are going to be doing an open house next week, Monday through Thursday, at our water operations facility located at 1889 North Arthur. During that time, we will be joined by multiple departments within the city of Pocatello, including WPC, that's Water Pollution Control, sanitation, and science and environment, and also the county will be there. We'll be doing our best to not only celebrate National Water Week, but to also educate the public on this important resource, how we get it up out of the ground into their houses, how we pump it to their house, what happens to that water after we use it, the wastewater, and what we do to treat it, and also the importance of stormwater, all the water that we've gotten from rain and snow from the last winter. We talk about why it's important for us to care about that water as well, among many other things, so we are super grateful for you guys' support, and thank you.
Thank you. Council President Cheetum?
Whereas the city of Pocatello includes an estimated 10,552 older Americans, which is 19% of our population, who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently, and whereas the city of Pocatello recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age, and whereas the city of Pocatello can look to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore, Brian C. Blatt, the mayor of Pocatello, does proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans Month in Pocatello, and encourage every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging.
Thank you, and I believe, oh, am I right? We do have somebody. We were told it was somebody else. They want a picture, so let's shoot over there.
Yep, hi, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. If you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Councilmen. We are honored that you're supporting us in this Older Americans Month. We want our older...
Can you tell us who you are, so everybody watches?
I'm sorry, I'm Gina Hubbard. I'm the Information and Assistant Supervisor at the Area Agency on Aging. We are celebrating our older adults this month. We want to honor, respect, and celebrate them, and we're so happy that you will join us in doing so, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lurick?
Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and is the oldest among public servants, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas city clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the municipality through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the week of April 30 through May 6 as Municipal Clerks Week in Pocatello, and further extend appreciation to our city clerk Connie Kendall and deputy clerk Wendy Prather, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform.
And I just might say this, she's too afraid to do what the other two did. And neither one of them are willing to do so, so we're grateful.
We're very, very busy, right where we are, but we're both very, very happy to serve our city and the citizens, and we appreciate everybody's support for Municipal Clerks Week, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to let her just sit here for nothing. Okay, agenda item five, calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. May 11, 9:00 AM will be a city council work session. May 18, at 5:30 PM will be a clarification meeting. May 18, at 6:00 PM will be a regular city council meeting. Other events, on May 5, tomorrow night, it would be Relight the Night down in historic downtown Pocatello. That will start at 8 o'clock in the evening. PBS will be filming the Relight the Night activities that we've had. It's really exciting. We'd encourage everybody to go down and be a part of that. That'll be a fun event. May 6, 2023, Portent Valley Fun Run Series begins with the Law Day Run. For more information or to sign up, visit the city's website or contact Parks and Recreation. Citywide cleanup at Caldwell Park from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. There will be a pancake breakfast, that's also on May 6. And May 6, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM will be a rabies vaccination clinic at the Animal Shelter, 3100 Avenue of the Chiefs. Contact the animal shelter, or contact animal services for more information. May 11, Brooklyn's Playground at OK Ward Park will be closed all day for the annual cleanup and maintenance. May 13, city auction at Primetime Auctions. May 14, Mother's Day at Zoo Idaho. Mothers will receive half off admission price when accompanied by a paid child. May 20, 8:30 AM, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, MIAC, is hosting their annual 5K. This event is free and open to the public, and will be held at Lower Ross Park. Register online at pocatello.gov by May 17. Same-day registration is also available from 8:00 AM to 8:30. Zoo Idaho is now open seven days a week. With dog licenses expiring June 1st, the city is offering half-priced dog licenses through the month of May. Licenses may be purchased at City Hall or Animal Shelter. Compost happens. The yard waste-only composting program has begun and will continue through the last week of November. Yard waste carts will be picked up on the same day as your regular collection day. Sandbags are available to residents at the Public Works Annex located at 2405 Garrett Way. Residents may fill and take up to eight bags per household. Congratulations to all of the Idaho State University graduates. That is also happening this weekend. Okay, with that, then, we will move to agenda item six is a public hearing, Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040. This time is been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040. Council may wish to adopt the proposed document as an official city plan. Too much stuff up here. I might just add, as a reminder, there are two different public hearings tonight. One is on the comprehensive plan. The other public hearing is on the land use map. So there'll be two things. If you're interested in commenting on the map, that would be the next public hearing. I declare the public hearing open. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jim Anglisi, Long Range Planner for the City of Pocatello. Request before you is regarding Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040. The plan is part of the Our Valley, Our Vision Initiative, which outlines Pocatello's planning process that is focused on equity, education, empowerment, and engagement. This process culminates into a vision which informs a suite of community plans, with the comprehensive plan being the overarching plan for the initiative. The comprehensive plan is central to the Planning and Development Services Department's role, which is to oversee the orderly growth and development of Pocatello. The purpose of the comprehensive plan is to establish a community-wide playbook that establishes the city's priorities for the next 20 years. City leaders, elected officials, staff, developers, community organizations, and the general public should look to the plan as a guide for important policies and decisions. To get the most out of this plan, the community should use it to represent community values for future development and vision, provide a framework and common goals for all other community plans, guide policy decisions, inform changes to city regulations and standards, inform resource and budgeting decisions, and evaluate and measure progress towards achieving community-wide goals. The plan seeks to implement a vision for Pocatello and its people. It reflects the voice of residents and is the guiding document for shaping Pocatello's future. The vision presented in the plan is built off of community values as identified through significant public outreach. The entire process of the Comprehensive Plan 2040 began in February 21, where planning staff began the initial steps to inform and coordinate with city departments and advisory committees, perform research, and formulate outreach process and survey information. This outreach took place between June and December of 2021, where city staff attempted to engage the public through various events, open houses, and online activities. This included 20 events, eight of which were open houses dedicated specifically for engagement regarding the plan. These events included tabling at Family Fun Day Events, Poki Paddle, Revive at Five, Farmer's Market, Welcome Back, Lunge in Black, as well as tabling at ISU Student Union Building. Included also were presentations to Rotary Clubs and Chamber of Commerce, as well as an online open house for those unable to attend the in-person. Nearly all households in the city were mailed an invitation to participate in the in-person open houses, and 250 community members chose to participate. Central to this outreach was the community values survey. The survey was open from July 1st to October 31st of 2021. 864 individuals chose to participate in this survey. Between January 22 and January 23, planning staff thoroughly combed through survey responses and open house feedback to identify common values and concepts that the community shared. Once these common values were identified, staff began researching topic-specific information that would inform a vision and specific goals and strategies. The culmination of this vision, its goals and strategies, are presented to you in the proposed comprehensive plan. The most critical component to this or any other long-range plan is that of implementation. The city is committed to implementing the goals and strategies in this plan. Pocatello seeks to foster a strong collaborative culture and advance the plan's vision. Going forward, we must work together as a community to build upon that spirit and to better integrate a holistic interdisciplinary approach to city projects, processes, and decision-making. Collaboration must extend beyond city departments and city officials. Implementation of the plan will only be successful through partnerships with community, including nonprofits, businesses, employers, neighborhoods, and the general public. These community partners offer perspectives, strategies, and resources that are essential to realizing the community vision for the future of Pocatello. A draft of the plan was released to the public on February 24, 2023, to provide opportunity to review and give feedback. This comment period was accompanied by two open houses held at the Marshall Public Library on March 7 and March 29, 2023. The feedback we received during this comment period enabled us to finalize the document and adjust the plan as described in the memorandum presented to you in this meeting's agenda packet. All comments submitted to the planning department have been provided to you for your review. In addition to your guidance throughout this process, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission's feedback, we could not have gotten to this point on Comprehensive Plan 2040 without significant contributions of the following groups and individuals. The Comprehensive Plan Focus Group, which included Kate Fornarato, Derek Jansen, Heather Murray, Shin Kyu-Roo, Kaylee White, and Amy West. The Planning and Development Services staff, including the Director Brent McLean, and Carl Anderson, Will Claver, Matthew Lewis, Aslan McCullough, and those who are no longer with the department, including Great Cleary and our intern, Ramondo Trevino. Additional city staff that contributed significant work to the plan was our GIS team, that includes Ryan Howerton, the city's GIS coordinator, and GIS intern Kylie Kowalski. Finally, I'd like to thank all the community members who have participated in the planning process and have provided direction and vision that laid the foundation for this plan. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions, council? Okay, thank you. Oh, before you leave, have we received any correspondence that we, have you received any that we have not received yet?
No additional response.
Okay, Madam Clerk, have you received any in your office we have not seen yet?
Council's received everything.
Okay, thank you. Then I would look for, as a reminder, everybody's testimony is limited to three minutes per testimony. I would look for any testimony of those supporting the application. And there's a sign-up sheet, I believe, right there. If you would...
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Put your name down there, and then we'll just go from there.
My name is Sue Skinner, and I live here in Pocatello, Idaho. I'm the Environmental Policy Advisor to the Portent Resource Council, which is a grassroots nonprofit, which we're looking forward to partnering with the city. We are very supportive of the comprehensive plan. We suggested some changes in wording, and they were accepted, and so we would like to strongly support the comprehensive plan as it's written right now. The environmental resiliency section basically reiterated our comments from your proclamation on water, which is really nice, so I would say ditto on the water information as well. But, so I wanted to let you know that the PRC's first campaign, I was here with the last comp plan, and I was thinking, Mayor Blatt, you're the only person in county who was here the last time, other than Linda was on this side the last time. Our first campaign was organized around citizen concerns about water and protecting the lower Portent Valley aquifer. It was called the Put Water First Campaign, and it advocated water security by protecting the aquifer from further degradation, valuing the drinking water use we use now and into the future, and recognizing that without high-quality drinking water availability, economic development, and quality of life in Pocatello is diminished. That wording did not make it into the comp plan, but what we were told at that time is that the city puts water first. Well, unfortunately, we've lost a couple of drinking water wells since that time, so we're still going the wrong direction, and what we're here is to advocate moving towards something more protective, more formal, something called a sensitive aquifer. The history is it's been 30 years since citizens raised their concern about drinking water here, and it's been, you know, in fact, it was the Highway Pond, which I was told today that the Highway Pond has water in it again, thanks to our flooding. And we just need to do more. We need to formalize this. But my ask of you basically is leadership from the city. With your large population, you have great responsibility for everyone, as your proclamation said, and we would like to see the city lead the rest of the folks in the area that use the aquifer. We think it's really important for the city to be the leader on this. It's been stagnant. It's time to pick it up again, I think.
Super.
And two more minutes, Will.
Yeah.
So give us the political will and the leadership. That's what we'd like to do. That's what we'd like to see.
Perfect. Thank you. Any others supporting the application?
Mayor and city council members, the Comprehensive Plan for Pocatello is an exciting working document to make Pocatello more positive an environment than it already is.
Ma'am, could you identify yourself for the public?
Yeah, Ruta.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ruta Casabianca, living in Pocatello. The planning department has worked hard to involve the constituency with the development of this plan and its future implementation. It is important to note that the median income for working families is currently around $47,000 per year, which is below the median income for Idaho and the country. Until recently, that was above the income level for my daughter and her family of six. That meant that most family programs, which are expensive, were out of their range. Therefore, parks and recreation activities, which are free or low-cost, are critical for Pocatello and its blue-collar working families. The analysis in the plan is that parks require greater maintenance and are underutilized. Parks are vital to Pocatello and its families. My family lives near Alameda Park, and the children play in one small corner where there is a playground. I almost never see the remainder of the park, which is quite large, being utilized, except for the walkway with dog walkers. I am from New York City, where the parks became assets after the partnership between the Conservancy and other volunteer groups partnered with the city to landscape the parks and make them vital to the community. It was the old ladies like me, but it requires vision from the city for these partnerships to develop. Another area of concern for me which was identified in the comprehensive plan is the importance of public transportation, especially for the elderly and young. There is no public transportation on Sundays, very limited on Saturdays, and none in the evenings, which makes it hard for us to enjoy anything in the evening if we don't drive. And us older folk often should not be driving at night. I love the downtown and the pocket parks throughout the city, but I personally could use a little bit more visual stimulation with public art and comfortable and inviting benches. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others supporting? Heather, I'll call you up right now, so nobody else beat you there.
Heather Diselkoon, Pocatello, Idaho. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the planning department and everybody who was involved with the creation of this comp plan. I knew, I know it took a lot of time, effort, many months to put it together, and I especially wanted to draw attention to the section on strengthening civic-mindedness, because that's important to me. And I appreciate that that was included in the comp plan, but also it was... An example was set for the city on how that could take place. Under the empowerment section, it says, "Provide tools for the community to have a voice and access to decision-making. In order for community members to be involved in the process of planning and decision-making, city and community leaders have to understand that we need to involve the end-user of the community in the decision-making process outside of the public hearing. Community members should insist that nothing about us, without us, is for us." And I just, I would like to see that carry forward into other parts of the city when it comes to other decisions, things like ARPA and budget-making. And I think that a good example was set by the planning department in that. I also wanted to quickly bring up, one of the things I did in reviewing this plan, and I can't admit that I read all 200 pages of it, it's a very long document, but I happen to have the 2004 plan, and one of the things I did was to look at that and say, okay, 20 years has passed, actually, 2003, 2003, 20 years has passed, what have we accomplished? And I can't answer that completely, but there's things in here I can see that probably were accomplished behind the scenes, other things I look at that were goals and strategies in the 2003 plan that just never were brought to fruition. So I would encourage the city, once this is approved, don't just put it on a shelf, bring it out on a yearly basis, ask your departments to report on how are we accomplishing these strategies and these goals that are set forth in this plan. Thank you.
Super. Thank you. Any others in support of the application?
Hey there, guys. Mayor, council. My name is Josh Pullman. I live here in Pocatello, also a local business owner. I know a couple of you guys from the business, but it's called Six, as we do art. And so this comp plan is important. We've spent lots of time talking to Jim, and I think I've read the section about why art and creativity is important to the comp plan probably more times than Jim has, maybe? I don't know. We'll tally up later on. But, no, I think it's wildly important, because I think we're at a good crossroads right now as a city where, you know, geographically where we're located between Salt Lake and Boise. Tying in that art and creativity into the comp plan is going to be paramount for how our city is structured moving forward. Looking at what we've done over the last two years, we've seen an exponential amount of growth in art and creativity. We were able to implement, this will be our third year doing a mural fest, with a really good community response. We do nonprofit kids' classes over at our studio, just down the street over here, 225 Yellowstone every Tuesday and Thursday. We also have bands play over at our studio as well. That's another aspect that we haven't seen too much by way of an all-ages venue for a while, a healthy all-ages venue in Pocatello for music. So we've been kind of, you know, doing our diligence on putting all that together, but I just wanted to come voice my appreciation for Jim. This whole plan, fantastic. We're really looking forward to being a community partner, as it were, in this plan moving forward. We're ready and poised to make considerable, I don't know if you'd call it sacrifices, but to take the opportunity to partner with this plan to bring some of that art and creativity that's outlined in it to fruition. And as we met with Mayor yesterday and we talked to Jim, as an art studio, as a shop, as a community member, we are ready to, you know, kind of throw our lot in with it and see what we can get done. Thanks.
Thank you. Josh did a great job plugging the business, too. They'll be in the minutes. Any others supporting the application? Okay, any uncommitted to the application?
Good evening, Mayor Blad and city council. My name is Christine Young, and I am, I live here in Pocatello. I'm a representative and a board member of our Pocatello Senior Activity Center that's located at 427 North Sixth. I just wanted to just make a statement that the Board of Directors at the Senior Activity Center would like to ensure that the City of Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040 includes the current data and demographic trends related to seniors for the next 20 years. We would request that the Comprehensive Plan reflect the needs of the aging population. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted?
I am Linda Fairchild. I live in Pocatello. Good evening, mayor and the council members. I am here as a board member from the Pocatello Senior Activity Center at 427 North Sixth. And in reviewing the comprehensive plan, I could not see where the Senior Activity Center was addressed. And most of the board members went to the open house, and they couldn't pinpoint anything either. As Pocatello is a retirement community, more and more people are moving into our area. We would like specific statements addressing this issue and where are we going to proceed to continue serving the Activity Center. I know that in 2020, before 2020, the Senior Activity Center was serving 60 meals a day. Now, since COVID has gone, is over, today we serve 135 meals. It ranges between 100 and 120 people a day. And so we need specific plans for the aging. Thank you.
Mayor? Thank you. Are we able to interact? Um, we never...
It's probably best to bring your questions.
Probably, hold your questions. We never really have done that. Okay. They've done a good job plugging the Senior Center, too. Great job. Any others uncommitted?
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Mark Dalquist. I am at 2451 Andrews Street in Pocatello. And first off, I do appreciate the opportunity to comment. For the most part, I think the plan is thorough, and it provides insightful perspectives of our community. I appreciate the city staff, and in particular Jim Anglesey, for taking so much time to capture all the comments and insights through several hours, I know, of work on that to get the public outreach done. I do, however, feel that one of the vision elements should include a topic related to community beautification, streetscape, and just general appearance of the community. Here's a sampling of the comments in the community value survey that had a similar theme and tone. Need to improve the upkeep of the town, quote, "improve the overall appearance of Pocatello", and quote, "need a clean and well-kept community." More focus in the vision elements, which the city staff cited as the backbone of the plan, needs to emphasize community beautification in both private and public areas of the city. I feel as though I'm a credible source in the area of community beautification and can speak with some firsthand knowledge. I'm a multi-year member and past president for several years of the Chamber of Commerce Beautification Committee. I'm the lead volunteer coordinator for the annual city-wide spring cleanup, board member of Portnoy Valley Partners, and executive director of Neighbor Works Pocatello. Each of these entities have a strong focus on helping the community look and feel its very best. My cohorts serve in these organizations because they have a passion for how our community looks and how it presents itself. In conclusion, I still think we have some work to do with curb appeal and pride and ownership of our community, and encourage some modifications to the plan that give beautification, upkeep of property maintenance a more prominent seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted?
Lydia Noble, Pocatello resident, and I'm neither for or against the plan, but since I deal a lot with data, and that's what drives how I think, I'm just going to bring up a couple of things that are Census Bureau data that concern me greatly about a wonderful plan like this possible for implementation. And that is that we've had, from the period 2010 to 2020, a significantly lower growth of population than is occurring elsewhere in the state. And there's also some significant information that is included in the comprehensive plan that greatly concerns me, and that has to do with growth of industry. The Census Bureau does a really good rackup of industry growth. They do it statewide, they do it by cities, and if you look at the top 10 populated cities in Idaho, Pocatello being one of them, our industry growth, and by industry that includes education, recreation, hotels, restaurants, management, administration, government, it includes all of the different categories of industry. Our growth is in the negative, substantially negative, compared to nine other cities. Ours is minus 8%, plus or minus. The nearest city to that is plus 11%. So I encourage the council to please look at that data, because that is not data that leads me to think that Pocatello is ready to implement this type of a comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application? Okay, we got one behind you. Go ahead, and then we'll get you right after that.
Hello, my name is Keith Spiegel. I'm a resident of Pocatello for the last six years, and I have strong reservations about this. I think it has a lot of good parts in it, but something that really does concern me, especially coming out of state, is the public art. I think that we need to make sure that we have a strong committee, subcommittee possibly, reviewing any public art that may be displayed going forward to ensure we have no more pornography released to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, no, I'm sorry, you can't. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Elba Worley, and I have lived in Pocatello for almost 40 years. When I came, before that, I lived in New York City. And believe me, when I came here, I used to call Pocatello paradise, because it was a very close community, that we have the same values. And also, even though it was considered at the time Pocatello a rural community, now it's considered an urban community. I mean, our streets look better. The streets look horrible. Driving around town, I live on the area of Alameda, it's horrible. Wherever you go, it's like you're driving in a minefield. You feel like, probably like, I see movies about wars in Iraq, where you see all these explosions going on. Well, we don't have explosions, but we have potholes everywhere. And I don't know, I think it's nice to dream about how wonderful we want Pocatello to be. Yes, it's wonderful, but I think we need to take care of the basics, and the basics are the streets. That's one of them, among other things that have been mentioned here, but I think, I don't know what you guys are going to do, but I know if there was a COVID time where there wasn't much that could be done, but I think it's time to take care of all those potholes and do it right, because this about putting a little bit of gravel one time, the next day the gravel is gone and the big holes are there already. I mean, you guys need to do something. I ask you, mayor, then please, look at seriousness. I guess I haven't drove around your neighborhood, so I don't know you have better streets than mine, and I think that we all deserve, because we're all taxpayers, so we all deserve to have good roads to drive around, to take our kids, grandkids to school, to just drive safely. I mean, even in the evenings, it's so dangerous to drive around town, because if you don't see those holes, boy, you're ruining your car, so you might get in an accident. So I ask you to please, before you dream so big, take care of the basics, fix the roads.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application? Okay, any opposed to the application? Okay. We'll bounce back to uncommitted. We'll bounce back to uncommitted.
Good afternoon. Mayor, City Council. My name is Brian Keller. I'm a property owner in Pocatello. I sent in a letter and some information to all of you. I had some opposition to the comprehensive plan. I'm choosing to speak uncommitted instead of opposed because by and large, I think the comprehensive plan is a great piece of work. I think that the Planning Commission put in a significant volume of work. I think it's good work. I think by and large, it is a great document. My concern is that, you know, the document speaks to our valley, our vision. Talks about significant community outreach. It talks about, after those comments, Jim followed up that, you know, like 250 residents responded. That's out of 57,000 residents in the city. It's less than a half a percent. There was no notification to landowners that this might impact through the associated land use portion of it until like February, March or so of this year. My concern is that this is a partnership, right? With everybody, not just the 250 people that managed to make it to one of these sessions, but everyone. There are handfuls of landowners. I am one of them, but I'm one of many, right? Who open up land for the benefit of the public. And I think that the current comprehensive plan, through the action of removing the explicit language that was there in the prior plan, which reinforced the city recognizing the rights of private property owners and the rights of them to remain in full control of their property or be compensated otherwise, has been removed and diminished to a significantly small statement within the new comprehensive plan. And so what I would, I and I think many other private property owners who currently share land and look forward to the opportunity to continue to share land would like to see is a reinstatement of the language that was in the prior plan. A very explicit section which addresses private property owners, their rights to own the land, and the fact that that land, well, it is available for public use, needs to be respected as private property and treated as such. It is there as a segue to get from one portion of public property to another portion of public property. And I just want to make sure that that's reinforced to readers that they need to take care of it and appreciate it as private property.
Thank you. Okay, any others uncommitted? And we'll move to any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then, I know we've got a few questions. Have we got somebody opposed to it? Okay, well, come on up and tell us about it.
I'm Alice Keller, and I live on 1445 City Creek and have lived there since 1962. I own a nice big hunk of a unit and a portion of the, a good unit beside me. So I have lots of open space, and that's what I'm here about. I am concerned that the designation of residential slash open space, unless you define open space, is meaningless. We could call it fiddlesticks. Resident slash fiddlesticks. And until I tell you exactly what that means, you don't know what you are allowed to do on my property, and I don't know what I am allowed to do on my property. I have found no definition of open space. We all know it when we see it, right? We all love it. I love it, along with the rest of them. I am concerned that it is not defined in the plan. In general, I think the plan is an amazing thing. I think you have done an amazing job in putting it together. But the thing that frightens me a little bit is if we are not aware of the parameters of what open space, what defines open space. Is it a percentage of your property? Is it a certain amount of your property? Is it declared open space because of the use you put on your property? There are so many things that need to be considered, and I'm sure when people begin to want to do things with it, the frightening thing is that if it is declared residential, open. We know what residential means. We have all kinds of things that we enforce and encourage, and discourage too sometimes, I suppose. But we don't have anything really defining open space. By defining our property, excuse me, as open space, does that mean that a future date, when you decide what open space, what you want to use open space for, and where it is, and who it's going to affect, how is that to be determined? We were given a list last time we were here of all the things that could be considered open space. It went from agriculture to cemeteries to parking lots. It's just, it wasn't a list of possibilities of open space. It looked like the back end of an old telephone book. You took up all the...
Thank you. Ms. Keller, thank you very much. Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, I know we have a couple of questions from the council. No questions? Jim, did you want to say anything? I think the council's got some pretty good notes, but do you want to just wrap some things up a little bit?
I do have questions for Jim.
Okay, we have a question for you anyway. As Jim's coming up there, Mark, you mentioned, you talked about the creative community and stuff. Would you grab the open space plan or the comprehensive plan, page 63? Look at that. It talks about streetscape and all that mess. I think that might, it may have answered the questions that you had, so. Thank you. Linda?
I just wanted to ask you about the designation of open space. And I think there may be some confusion. Maybe I'm even a little bit confused on this. But this hearing is on the comp plan, and then we're going to have the hearing on the land use plan part of it next. And there's designations of open space in both of those plans, and they're different. And so I was wondering, in terms of the comp plan, this part of it, if you could explain the term open space or, as some people have mentioned, residential slash open space and what these definitions are. And then I guess, maybe when we have the next hearing, then we can hear what open space means in that part.
So actually, the two hearings are two separate things of one. And so the future land use map, we'll get into that. I can get into the details of the open space at the next hearing. It should be the same because that is part of the comprehensive plan is the future land use. And so I don't know if you want me to answer it at that one or...
I think let's not mix the two hearings. We've got the one on the plan, and then we'll hear the map, plan on the next one.
Can we talk about what open space means in general in the comp plan? Or do we need to talk about more specifically in the next part?
It'll be addressed in the next one.
Okay. Wait.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Jim? Go ahead, Jim, if you have any.
Yeah. So one thing we really try to do with the comprehensive plan is to make it succinct and easy to understand and navigable. One of the things you see with these plans is that they're 300 pages long, and they're all words. We want it to be quick, succinct, and able to grasp so that not just staff can do something about it, but the general public can do something about it. Where it is, and they can pick it up, and they know where to go, and it's not something that's going to put them to sleep. And so we want it to be succinct and just easy to read. And so there may be some things in there that may look like we're glossing over things. And it may just be mentioned in one statement or one goal or one strategy. But that was intentional so that during implementation, that it's flexible enough to, if there are opportunities or if there are other directions that we can go but fit within the parameters of that strategy or that goal, we can go those routes without getting backed into a corner and doing one specific thing. We wanted to keep it general, and comprehensive plans should be general so that we can get more specific with more specific plans or implementation goals and strategies or strategic ideas that we can approach those wide overarching goals. And so just wanted to let you know that that was intentional is to make it broad and overarching. And that's all I have.
Okay, super. Thank you. Then, I declare the public hearing closed. We will, council, we'll have a discussion on this. We've had a lot of input. And so at a future City Council work session, we'll have more discussion on this, talk about implementing. We've got a number of things in writing as well. And so we'll have the planning department prepared to do that at a future work session for us as we move forward. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number seven. Public hearing, Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040 Future Land Use Map. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding the Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040 Future Land Use Map. Council may wish to adopt the proposed map to be included in the Comprehensive Plan 2040. I declare the public hearing opened. Jim's getting his steps today.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Anglesey, Long Range Planner. The request before you is regarding the Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040 Future Land Use Map. The Future Land Use Map provides direction on how the land within and surrounding the city of Pocatello is to be used for future development or redevelopment. The map should reflect the vision of Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040 and is to be used in tandem with the city's current zoning ordinance, Title 17, which utilizes Euclidean zoning characterized by the separation of land uses by use type. The proposed Future Land Use Map, if approved, will replace the current Future Land Use Map. Major differences in the proposed map includes land within the area of city impact, or the ACI. And where the map, the current map only extends beyond municipal boundaries within the Northgate area. It also includes three new designations as well as areas important to protect from development due to the desire to protect steep slopes, riparian nature, wildlife, and/or recreation areas. The current designations and their descriptions for the future land use are as follows. Open space, this designation denotes projected or existing private, public, or quasi-public open space areas. These areas may include federal, state, city, and/or privately owned land, parks, cemeteries, golf courses, trails, river areas, nature conservation areas, and/or agricultural land. Residential, this designation denotes projected or existing residential areas of various densities and forms. These areas include a range of residential uses from suburban to urban neighborhoods. Mixed use, this designation denotes projected or existing areas that allow a mixture of compatible residential and commercial uses within a structure, development, or areas that serve as a transition between a residential and commercial zone. Commercial, the designation denotes projected or existing areas that allow commercial uses with upper-story residential uses. Urban core, this designation denotes projected or existing areas of the highest density and a variety of uses, including multi-story, commercial, upper-story residential, and mixed uses, and residential apartments or condo buildings. Employment, this designation denotes projected or existing areas that allow commercial and office park uses. Industrial denotes projected or existing areas that allow industrial and office park uses. And the special districts that by their function, disposition, and configuration cannot or should not conform to one or more of these designations. As a result of public engagement efforts regarding Comprehensive Plan 2040 between June and December of '21, the resulting goals and strategies of the proposed plan and as a requirement by state code regarding comprehensive plans, a draft of the Future Land Use Map was created. Once the draft was created, all property owners whose property designation was proposed to change were sent a letter outlining the proposed changes. Pocatello City Code, Section 1702, 300A, 3D, requires that if more than 200 property owners are to be noticed in lieu of mailed notices, to each property owner, the city is only required to publish said notice in the journal both as a display ad and a legal notice with additional noticing sent to television and radio media outlets. However, as a courtesy, planning staff sent approximately 2,000 letters to provide opportunity for property owners to respond, ask questions, or request a change in the proposed designation. These letters were sent February 28, 2023, informing each recipient that they had until March 31, 2023 to respond if changes to the proposal were desired. Dozens of calls were received regarding these letters, and staff clarified information that may not have been clear and resolved concerns regarding the proposed designations. In many instances, property owners worked with staff to discuss any needed adjustments to the proposed designation of their property. From the feedback we received from property owners, one major change from the original proposed designations was that of changing the designation of public, or P, to open space, OS. Due to concerns of many that the designation of P would restrict the use of private property and/or result in eminent domain, even though the reality of this is certainly not the case, nor was it the intention of said designation to inflict any regulatory taking. It is important to keep in mind that the Future Land Use Map does not equal zoning. The Future Land Use Map helps guide development and land uses but does not include any regulatory standards. Zoning, on the other hand, is a regulatory tool used to provide development standards regarding use on a particular parcel or lot. It is through zoning that allows or restricts various use types. The Future Land Use designation of a particular property may not align with existing zoning. So if a property is currently zoned residential, it will remain residential unless a property owner sees a need to rezone the property. If the city ever seeks to rezone properties, we would do so in collaboration with the affected property owners. This proposed map will not affect the zoning districts that are currently in place but provides a guide to collaborate with the public regarding future development opportunities. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions? Before you go anywhere, did that answer your open space question?
I would like to hear a little bit more on the change from public to open space.
Sure. We use the public designation definition to create this open space. One, what was changed, it still included public and quasi-public open spaces. What changed was private. And so a private open space obviously is different than a public open space, whereas the private owner still controls and maintains that property. Why we included the private designation is that there are some areas that are either in an easement or for the protection of riparian areas or existing trails or agricultural land, that be reserved from development. A lot of it is, if you look on this map, a lot of it is like the gullies that we have throughout town. Typically, when a new development comes in, we ask the developer to set aside those areas as open space. And so that was the intent of that open space designation was, and on private land, was to protect those areas that may not be suitable for residential. that may not be suitable for residential development or any other type of development.
Thank you.
Did that help you?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then with that, have you received any letters, phone calls that we have not been made aware of?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. Madam Clerk, have we had any correspondence in the clerk's office?
Counsel has received it all.
Thank you. Then we will move to any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed?
We had one.
Don, you know better than that. You know you got to move and we're up here. We're going through this.
You're going to rock and roll.
Is this uncommitted?
This is uncommitted.
Uncommitted.
Yes.
Mayor, council, thank you. And that other, the other presentation was awesome. They did a great job. Kudos. And this one is a great job as well, but here's my concern.
Don, did you tell everybody home who you are?
Oh, Don Zevie.
Thank you.
Live in Pocatello.
Thank you.
In the Comprehensive Plan on the South Fifth Area, I've got just a little bit of concern on that because of the way that it appears that there's industrial and mixed use down on that South Fifth Area. And which makes a lot of sense from an industrial perspective, but then having mixed use behind the industrial is kind of a little bit of a conflict. And consequently, we've got Century High School and then we've got this little four-project development that's going on that's industrial. Right across the street from there, there is, it's in the county. And the county is allowing residential units to be built in an area that's been designated for either mixed use or industrial. And so there's some kind of a bit of a conflict there that maybe you should have a conversation with the county and clean that up so that they're not allowing more residential to be built in an area that could be designated for an industrial use, which makes a lot of sense in that area because of the access from the freeway for trucks to get on and off is a clear indication of something that's great. However, that being said, it also makes sense for a large retail development. So I'm going to this, I can't say more than I'm going to say, but I'm going to the International Council of Shopping Centers on May 21 and a meeting with a large retailer that I pitched that round to for a retail project because of what's going on in income and the proximity to the growth that's happening down there. And consequently, the way it's designed now, it doesn't align with the overall Comprehensive Plan. So I've got some concern with that. Okay, so I might want to take some consideration in being a little bit more flexible, but you really need to speak with the county and having them slow down and not go running amok and allowing things to happen there that could interfere with the overall growth of the community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that sounds like an area of city influence that needs to be resolved.
Yeah, definitely a city influence, right? I mean, you drive down there right across from Century High School and you can see there was that old house. And then all of a sudden, this house pops up and he's got plans for more houses and it just, it doesn't fit. Even if you do industrial, you're going to have all these industri- I'm over time. Oh, you stopped me. Thank you. But it doesn't fit because if you start putting these industrial buildings in there, you got to have residences behind industrial buildings. I mean, Brent, you know, that's not the smartest thing in the world, you know? And then because of the businesses that are created there, it just doesn't fit with the plan overall. I think there's some issues that we probably need to talk about in that whole South Fifth Area.
I see an easy fix, Council President. Easy fixes, Don just hurries up and signs them and gets them here next week. That's easy. That's easy.
I just wonder if you've had the same conversation with the county, Don?
Crickets.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Great work.
Thank you. Any other uncommitted? Okay, any opposed to the application? Hell, if you people are slow tonight, you got to get moving here. I was all but closing it down.
I should, I'll speak faster. I'm Robin Kent. I live at this 1413 City Creek. And so it's been talked about a little bit about the open space. But as a property owner, we have almost three acres. We go, our property goes over the trail, which we have left open. We've been really good stewards of the land. We appreciate the trails. That's why we live there. We love them. But I'm really concerned about the change of residential to open space. If you look on that chart you showed with the zoning, as far as the Comprehensive Plan, open space is aligned directly with public when you go into the actual zoning ordinances. And as a property owner, I really don't want my property listed as public. And I think if any of, we asked interview if you wanted your backyard listed as public, you probably wouldn't, or even as open space. Some concerns I have as a parent, right where we're at, my kids call it the enchanted forest, but there's kind of that little area that you go underneath the trees and there's been, we've had trouble with homeless people camping there. And as we've reached out to the police on that, it's not been a really super positive experience on getting that resolved. And one of the conversations I had with an officer said is it's residential and private, we have a lot more to go on versus public and open space as far as moving those people out. So as a mother with four children and elders up there, I'm concerned as moving my properties from residential to open space that that makes that even more complicated dealing with that population. Another concern I have is we have in our overall, our family Comprehensive Plan, we'd like to build a shop or a barn in our property. With three acres, we've got plenty of space for that, but I'm concerned if we change that to open space that that will make the permit process more complicated and more difficult for us to put something on our property. And so I would ask that you would just change it back to residential. If there's something, you know, that we need to do to be better stewards and sharing of the trails that is what they're trying to address that, we're happy to work with that as with property owners, but we would like that not to be changed from residential to open space. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Sign in again and introduce myself.
Absolutely, your second. It's a different public hearing, so yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. I am a property owner in Pocatello. I oppose the land use map.
Brian, you need to give us your name again and all that.
Brian Keller. I'm sorry, 1517 City Creek. I oppose the land use map as written. My big concerns with the proposed land use map are the existing definitions, right, of residential are public, residential allows public and quasi-public uses such as parks, schools, and some public facilities. And then public property is intended to support zoning districts that allow public quasi-public such as parks, open space, schools, or other public facilities. So there's a crossover between the definitions, but there's a very explicit distinction between private property, residential, and public property, which includes open space. The new definitions remove the explicit nature of the language and make it so that residential, that open space, when it has an open space designation, there is no real good component of that that identifies the land as private or residential. And my concern with the definitions as written are that they err towards the side of land that's private being interpreted as public land. To the extent that the map actually shows private property as fully open space, it is within my property's parcel as identified in my parcel map. The easement that's there is not a public easement. It's an easement for a pipeline right away, for a railroad that no longer exists. And the Bannock Shishon Tribe had that survey done after I owned the property without notification to a property owner. And the Planning and Zoning Commission is using that as a public easement. It is not at all a public easement, and that's explicitly identified in the narrative of the survey. Jim mentioned, and rightfully so, that the land use map does not define zoning areas, right? However, if you were to look at the current definitions and compare them to the prior land use map, you will find that in actuality, that's what ends up happening. So while it doesn't explicitly say this is what you're going to do, historically, that's exactly what we do. And my concern is that if we adopt it as written, that is what's going to happen. What I would like to see, and I encourage you to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to adjust their plan, is to identify property that has residential and public use as maybe a special, unique class that's private property with a public use agreement. I'd really like another 30 seconds to finish my-
Oh, I'm sorry. I always run into issues when I give somebody extra time, but thank you. And we will, we will keep this stuff under advisement. Any others opposed? Okay, thank you. Then Jim, you want to come and make a few comments? Okay, then with that, we will, I declare the public hearing closed. We will, we've received a lot of contact, a lot of information, and this will also come up at a future city council meeting and a future study session so that we can consider all these things. And so I would recommend, Brian, why don't you give me a call so I can make sure I understand what you're doing, what you're talking about? Okay? Thank you. Yep, okay. Then we will move to agenda item number eight. Short plot application, Wayward King Horn Estates, Division 1. Council may wish to approve a short plot application submitted by Zach Davis of Wayward King Horn Properties LLC to subdivide 0.43 acres, more or less, into two residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located at 1256 King Horn Road. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with all applicable standards of Pocatello Municipal Code subject to compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval the short plot application, Wayward King Horn Estates, Division 1, with the conditions listed in the staff report as outlined in Agenda Item 8.
Second. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine. Airport lease termination, lease agreement, and resolution. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on the following. A termination of lease agreement for the hangar property lease between the city and Matt Salmon. And if approved, B, approve a lease agreement and adopt a resolution between the city and RMP LLC for approximately 3,000 square feet of property upon which they own an aircraft hangar. The lease agreement will be for a 10-year term at a rental rate of $642 per year to be increased annually according to the CPI with full rate review in 2026 and every five years thereafter. Council President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the lease agreement termination for the hangar property lease between the city of Pocatello and Matt Salmon's and also approve the lease agreement and adopt the resolution between the city of Pocatello and RMP LLC for the property upon which they own an aircraft hangar, 10-year term, rental rate $642 a year to be increased annually according to CPI with full rate review in 2026 and every five years thereafter as proposed in Agenda Item Number 9.
Second. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10. Airport hangar property right of first refusal. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on a right of first refusal agreement between the city and Stacy Meyer for 4,550 square feet of hangar property at the airport. The agreement will allow Mr. Meyer to, first rights of, first rights to lease a parcel of property adjacent to the current hangar property in the event a prospective tenant requests to lease the property. The agreement will be for a period of 10 years.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number 10 as listed in the agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Marsha. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11. Task Order Number 6 Barton Booster Station Modification Water Department. Council may wish to approve Task Order Number 6 Barton Booster Station Modifications, a task order addition to the Water On Call Service Agreement with Keller Associates Incorporated in the amount of $182,125. The task includes the completion of engineering design services to include surge protection, equipment, and replacement of the discharge header portion of the Barton Booster Station.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the Task Order Number 6 for the Barton Booster Station Modification as outlined in Agenda Item Number 11.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Laura?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12. Professional Services Agreement, U.S. EPA Brownfield Grant Management. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents for a professional services agreement between the city and StanTech Consulting Services Incorporated. StanTech will provide grant management services for the city, the city's U.S. EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant. The fee is a lump sum based on StanTech's proposal submission not to exceed $440,956 and will be funded 100% by grant funds from the U.S. EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant. The agreement and project are subject to availability of grant funds.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval and authorization of your signature on all pertinent documents for the professional services agreement between the city and StanTech Consulting Services for the management of the city's U.S. EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant as outlined in Agenda Item 12.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13. Bid Acceptance and Purchase of Asphalt and Related Materials, Street and Water Operations Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for Superpave Asphalt and Related Materials to Mickelson Construction Incorporated in the approximate amount of $1,135,250 as part of the Street and Water Department 2023 construction season subject to legal department review. Funding for the materials has been budgeted in the Street Department and the Water Department fiscal year 2023 budget. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the purchase.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for acceptance of the recommendations of staff awarding the bid to Superpave Asphalt and Related Materials to Mickelson Construction with the subject to legal department review authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents related to the purchase as outlined in Agenda Item 13.
Second. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Marsha. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Laura, sorry.
L comes before N. Yes.
Not tonight. Agenda item 14. Sole Source Declaration of Latex Emulsion Purchase. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of street operations staff and approve the purchase of GSB-88 2:1 Plus Latex Emulsion from Asphalt Systems Incorporated to be a valid sole source expenditure for the city's 2023 summer paving program and authorize the mayor's signature on all documents related to the purchase. The product is a trademark material that no other company makes. Therefore, it is impractical and impossible to obtain three bids. The amount requested is approximately 24,000 gallons of an estimated total purchase price of $100,320. FOB Salt Lake City, Utah. This expenditure has been budgeted for this, in the Street Operations 2023 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Sole Source Declaration of Latex Emulsion Purchase and authorize your signature on all documents related to the purchase as outlined in Agenda Item Number 14.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Laura?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15 is, we are adjourned. Thank you for your help, council.